Good evening. It's now 6:00 PM and the regular session of the Lancaster Planning Commission is called to order. Tonight, our invocation will be offered by Pastor John Metters of the Christian Life Assembly, and the pledge will be led by Commissioner Torassiano. If you'd please rise. And if you would remember a friend and former colleague who was in a traffic accident today, Dana Haycock. My understanding is she's doing okay, but that's the only information I have. So if you'd remember her in your prayer this evening, thank you.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you we can come before you this evening and ask for your wisdom and guidance. Father, we first pray for Dana Haycock, that she would heal her body, strengthen her, Lord, help her to recover from any injuries she may have suffered. And Father, through the accent, Lord, any financial needs she has, I pray that you would bless her in this. Lord, I thank you for these commissioners in this commission. I pray that you would bless them tonight, give them wisdom and guidance, help their decisions, honor you. Father, and bless this city as this city continues to honor you through prayer, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Please join me in saluting the straight nation of ours. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, the roll call, please.
Commissioners Randy Hall.
Here.
Cassandra Harvey.
Here.
Raj Molly.
Here.
Fabian Torassiano.
Here.
Ellis Wheeler is absent. Vice Chairman Dan Jacobson is absent. Chairman James Vos.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Commissioner Jacobson, Commissioner Wheeler are both absent this evening due to their employment commitments. And hopefully, when the fair is over, we'll see Commissioner Jacobson. When Commissioner Wheeler is done with his trial, he'll be here as well. Thank you. Public business from the floor. If an individual is unable to stay through the entire meeting due to extenuating circumstances, total of 10 minutes is provided at this time during which input may be given regarding agendas, agenda items. Individual speakers would then be limited to two minutes each. Do we have any early speakers?
Have no cards for that, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Then, any person who would like to address the Planning Commission on any agendized item is requested to complete a speaker's card for the recording secretary and identify the agenda item you'd like to discuss. Each person would then be given an opportunity to address the commission at the time such item is discussed by the commission. Speakers' cards are available at the rear of the chamber as well as here at your right on the table next to Deputy City Attorney, Mr. Adams. The first item is our consent calendar, and that's the approval of the minutes of the meeting of July 19, 2010. May we have a motion, please?
I move the motion that we approved minute from regular meeting of July 19, 2010.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next item is a continued public hearing of conditional use permit number 0817. We have a request from the applicant to continue this matter that came to us since this matter was continued last month. Mr. Ludiki, would you care to comment?
We received this, I believe, late last week, Mr. Chairman. Normally, if the applicant requests a continuance, staff has no objection to that. The only thing that we would recommend is that because there is a public hearing notice signed posted on the property, that if there is a continuance, that they be required to update that with the accurate date of the September Planning Commission meeting.
All right. Since this is a continued public hearing and the public hearing is open on this matter, do we have any speakers on this matter?
I have no speaker's cards, Mr. Chairman.
All right. No one wishing to address the commission on this matter? All right, then, depending on a vote, I guess we'll determine whether we'll keep the public hearing open or what. What's your pleasure, folks?
Do we need a motion to continue?
Yes.
Then I will make a motion to continue conditional use permit number 0817 to the September 20 Planning Commission meeting.
With the caveat that the property be reposted with the correct date, or with the corrected date for the new hearing?
Yes.
All right. Do I have a second?
I second that.
All right, thank you. All right. So this matter would then stay open as a continued public hearing, correct? All right, very good. Mr. Clear, any further comments from anyone? All right, please vote.
Motion passes 5-0, and the item will be placed on the September 20 regular meeting agenda.
Very good, thank you. All right, the next item is item number three, which is a new public hearing. This is zone change number 10-01, which is an addition to the senior mobile park overlay zone. So without objection, the public hearing is open on this matter. And do we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Approximately two years ago, the city adopted an ordinance that defines what a senior mobile home park is in terms of occupancy of the spaces, and also contains provisions that dictate how senior mobile home parks are to be operated. One additional provision that is contained within that ordinance is that an overlay zone can be placed on those properties that are determined to be senior mobile home parks by definition, and that that overlay zone can be done either by the initiation of the property owner or by the city. In this particular case, the city, based on information that we have regarding these three parks that are listed for you, and I will highlight in a moment, we have determined them to qualify as senior mobile home parks under the city's ordinance. Those would be the mobile home park at 1304 East Avenue I, known as Clear Skies, 2550 East Avenue I, known as The Californian, and 3753 East Avenue I, known as Sherwood. As we've indicated to you in the staff report, ultimately, this is a decision that the city council will have to render. However, because it does involve an amendment to the city's zoning map, the Planning Commission by state law must review it and make an advisory recommendation to the city council on it. As I've indicated to you, we are satisfied, both from our legal counsel standpoint and from copies of the operating rules that we have for these three parks, that they do indeed meet the definition of senior mobile home parks. Therefore, we have recommended to you that the zone change to place an overlay zone on each of these three sites be voted on you and be sent forward to the city council as a recommendation. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have on it.
Thank you, Mr. Ludiki. Does anyone have any questions?
This is just an overlay, bringing the parks up to code with their existing rules and
regulations currently.
From our perspective, that's what it is, yes.
Mr. Ludiki, he was saying the mobile homes parks rules and regulations, or the regular amendments that the city had for them?
The rules and operating requirements of each of the mobile home parks, we have copies of. Our belief is that those regulations simply reinforce the city's findings that each of these parks is in fact being operated as a senior mobile home park, and by the operation of the ordinance of the city, they are therefore defined as such. Under our ordinance, the placement of the overlay zone is something that we can do when a park meets that definition of being a senior mobile home park. So essentially, the operating rules that they have, in our view, reinforce the fact that it is a senior mobile home park. However, the rule as far as placing the overlay zone is the city's ordinance.
Did you have a visual of the scenario? You did.
I wish I did. It's in the staff report, but it's not on, yes.
You don't have a--
No, I don't.
Okay. So Ordinance 900, which has been placed into the zoning regulation at 17.08.305, is what you're really referencing here, right?
Correct.
So certainly, there are other mobile home parks within our community that possibly could fall under this ordinance as well, however, we're not aware of them, if they are?
No, I'm not immediately aware of them, and these are the three that the city has really investigated and looked at.
Right.
And we're at a level of comfort to make the recommendation.
All right, very good. So if there are others, I would imagine somebody's going to tell us about that.
I imagine we will find that out, yes.
Very good. All right, thank you. Any further questions from anyone? All right, then, the public hearing is open, and we'll hear from the speakers, please.
I have one speaker's card, I believe, Mr. Chairman, for this item. That's Ray Shavera.
All right. Welcome, Mr. Shavera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, staff, members of the audience. I'm here in support of staff recommendation. For your information, since you are a new city council, three years ago, the city council that was here passed unanimously a moratorium, which was subsequently extended to one year to freeze things until staff prepared what later became Ordinance 900, which the present city council, except for one of its current new members, passed early in its new tenure. For your information, the expert on this issue, I'm sure you already know, is Ms. Brubaker. In all the struggles that we had to get this far with protections for this type of affordable housing in this city, which has 28 mobile home parks, Ms. Brubaker has always told us that we only have three parks, a small one across from Friendly Village, and a nice one, The Californian, and ours over in the boonies next to the city border. I say boonies because we're much in request of police protection, surveillance. We have a lot of things going on, and our taxes should be paying something for. So whatever you could do to give us good police protection, we'd appreciate. We currently, as far as we know, are under no supervision from management. There is no manager. We're in between managers. That's another problem that we have. But we urge your unanimous support for this staff recommendation, and we expect it to be on the agenda for the city council on September 12. I'd be happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Any questions from anyone? All right, thank you, Mr. Shavera.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate your comments. All right, any other speakers on this matter?
No other cards, Mr. Chairman.
All right, then, it's appropriate to close the public hearing without objection and consider a motion on this recommendation of the city council.
I move that we adopt resolution number 1035, recommending to the city council approval of zone change number 10-01, applying the senior mobile home park overlay zone to three existing mobile home park properties in the city, Exhibit A.
I second.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion, question, comment?
Motion passes 5-0, and this item, I believe we are looking at scheduling for the September 14 Planning Commission, or City Council meeting.
All right, very good.
I think that's the first meeting in September.
Thank you.
Let me move in the residence.
Oh, all right. Okay, the next public hearing is on number four, conditional use permit 95-12, amendment number two. Mr. Molly?
And Chairman Vos, I have to recuse myself because I own a business in the same shopping center.
All right, then, thank you. You're excused. All right, without objection, the public hearing is open on this matter, and we've received, for the record, a letter from the--
Item four?
That's what I'm on.
Are we?
Oh.
Yeah. Commissioner Molly--
It's going to be on item five.
We will be, but right now, we're on item four.
Yeah.
Commissioner Molly may not have a conflict on this one. I don't--
I think we'll ask a question of the city attorney. It's approximately a half a mile from Mr. Molly's place of business. So would that be considered a conflict?
We're talking about Agenda Item Four, right?
Right.
Okay.
We're clear on five when we get there.
If his business, if he owns the property where his business is located, the ownership of that real property would constitute an economic interest that could serve as the basis for disqualification. If it's just the business itself, the analysis would have to be whether or not it's reasonably foreseeable that this particular item could have a material effect on his business.
That's a decision Mr. Molly would have to make. He's in, you're in the restaurant business?
That's correct.
Yes, I'm in the restaurant business.
This is a proposed car wash at a gas station, right?
It would be for him to determine whether or not he believed it was reasonably foreseeable that this particular item could have potentially a material effect on his business.
Just in case, I'll just accuse myself.
All right. All right, very good. Thank you. Can't be too careful. All right, so we're on item number four, which is conditional use permit 95-12, amendment number two. And we have not then received a letter on this, right? Okay.
No.
All right, then, could we have a staff report?
Yes, very briefly, Mr. Chairman. This involves the request to place a self-service car wash on an existing site that has a gasoline station and small market associated with it. The location as proposed, as you can see on the site plan, is along a drive-through lane that existed on this site, because at one time, there were, I believe, a couple of fast food tenants associated with this site that have since departed. From staff standpoint, we don't believe there are any issues as far as vehicle stacking, certainly nothing in terms of effect on adjacent properties, because the closest residential area is about 500 feet away. So we wouldn't expect noise or visual issues to be a concern here. The one thing we have noted for you in the staff report, at various times, staff has been concerned about the undeveloped balance of this property. There is an irrigation system, and there is landscaping installed there, but the maintenance has not always been as great as we would like it. We would ask and have proposed as a condition that the applicant basically perform the necessary maintenance to bring the landscaping of the undeveloped portion of the property up to the requirements as contained in a landscaping plan that was approved a number of years ago for the site. With that, we would recommend approval.
All right, thank you. Any questions, members? None? All right, then, we'll hear from speakers if there are any.
I have one, Mr. Chairman. Ahmad Gaderi.
You are the applicant, sir. Welcome.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Ahmad Gaderi with A&amp;S Engineering, 207 West Salamito, Suite Number 203, Bro Bank. Thank you for your time this afternoon. Just wanted to, again, reconfirm what staff indicated. This is a proposed self-service automated car wash in lieu of the old drive-through fast food business that was there before, and we have read the conditions. We'll be more than happy to comply with them, and as far as landscaping, we will maintain the landscaping as required by the city staff. If I can answer any questions.
All right, thank you. There may be some.
The one question I had had to deal with the four foot between the two buildings, and my concern was, is seems like that would be a magnet for homeless people.
We can close that off so that actually be, I agree, we can close it off if that's agreeable with the staff. We would more than have to comply with that.
Do you have, like, a security cams outdoors?
Oh, absolutely. We'll have secure cameras on their light fixtures outside. We're going to have secure cameras at the entrance and exit of it, of the car wash, and also behind the building as well. But we'll just close that off. That's a great idea. We'll do that, absolutely, to prevent anybody from, you know, loitering in that area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, any other speakers on this item?
Have no other cards, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, then. It's appropriate to close the public hearing without objection and consider a motion on this matter.
I'd like to move that we adopt resolution number 10-36, approving conditional use permit number 95-12, AM 2.
Thank you.
I'll take it, yeah.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments, discussion?
Motion passes 4-0, and I would note, just for the record, the applicant's concurrence with closing off of that small area between the car wash and the main building.
All right, very good. And that Mr. Molly did recuse himself on this matter. Next item is item number five, is conditional use permit 10-16, which is a conditional use permit for beer and wine sales on a bona fide restaurant. So without objection, the public hearing is open. Mr. Molly?
Yes, I would like to accuse myself again from this because I have owned business in the same shopping center.
Very good, thank you. All right, it's not often we have folks recusing themselves, so we'll get it sort of out here. All right, the public hearing is open on this matter. We have, in fact, received a letter of concurrence from the applicant on this one. Is that correct, Mr. Ludiki?
Yes, we have, Mr. Chairman.
Charro Chicken. All right. So it's not, does anyone care to hear a staff report?
No.
All right. Do we have speakers on this item?
The only speaker's card I have, Mr. Chairman, is the applicant's.
All right, very good. If the applicant wishes to address us, you're certainly welcome to at this time. If you identify yourself for the record, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Bachankar, and I am owner of Charro Chicken Restaurant. And I'm here, I'm requesting for the beer and wine, if we can sell there, because a lot of, I don't speak English, but a lot of customers asking when they come to buy food.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Your English is just fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have any other speakers?
Have none, Mr. Chairman.
All right, then. So without objection, the public hearing is closed, then we would consider a motion on this application.
I move we adopt resolution number 10-37, approving conditional use permit number 10-16.
Thank you.
I second it.
Thank you. Any further question, comment? All right, please vote.
Motion passes 4-0 with Commissioner Molly recusing himself.
Very good, thank you. Welcome back. Next item is a new public hearing on conditional use permit number 1018, the Promises of God Ministry. So without objection, the public hearing is open on this matter, and for the record, we have, in fact, received a letter agreeing to all the conditions as proposed. So does anyone care to hear a staff report on this item? None? All right. Do we have any speakers on this item?
I have no cards, Mr. Chairman.
All right, then. We have a concurrent letter and no speakers, so it would be appropriate to close the public hearing without objection and consider a motion on this matter.
I'll move to approve, to adopt, resolution number 10-38, approving the conditional use permit number 1018.
Second that. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Any further questions, comments?
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next item is item number seven, which is a public hearing on tentative parcel map, number 71248. The applicant is Lonnie Lane. So without objection, the public hearing is open, and we have received a letter, for the record, concurring with the conditions of the proposed parcel map. So do we have speakers on this matter?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have the applicant, but we also have another speaker's card also.
All right.
Who has not indicated one way or the other.
Oh, okay. Miss, who's going to speak? Mr. Lane?
Do you wish a staff report or not? No?
We might. I doubt it, but--
George Lane.
Mr. Lane, good evening.
Good evening.
Nice to see you.
Thank you. George Lane, I represent my mother, Yvonne Lane. Mr. Chairman, you know, commissioners, we're trying to do a very basic, you know, parcel split, no project planned at this time, but at some point, we would like some of the work done so at a future date, we might be able to accommodate a building of yet unknown right there. So that's, thank you.
Very good, thank you, sir. Do I have another speaker?
Yes, Eric, is it Maravis?
And I'm not clear on the last name. I'm sorry, sir?
Maravis is correct.
Maravis?
Maravis.
Good evening and welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, good evening, commissioners. Not sure really how to decide whether or not I'm for, in favor of, or in opposition of this project. whether or not I'm for, in favor of, or in opposition of this project. In looking at this, it seems that the three parcels that will be in the southwestern portion of this whole tract is commercial. I have two concerns regarding that. Number one is, one of the parcels, I believe that would be number four, is access is on L8, and right in that area there, just to the southeast corner of L8 and 57th there is Joe Walker Middle School. Now, the access to that whole area, to that parcel, is strictly on L8, which gives us a little bit of concern for the students, and their comings and goings. Also a major throwfare for students walking to Quartz Hill High School. In looking at the way that they're subdividing this, I also question whether or not it's really consistent with what's going on with the additional projects of the Lane Branch commercial area as well because parcel number one kind of does a little upside L, so we're saying we're going to do housing here, carry it around through on 57th, but then we're going to dot it in with commercial in here. That makes me kind of wonder what is really the true purpose of parcel one in the latter. Is it going to be multi-family housing at some point in time? The flow just really doesn't seem like it's going to be there, so I'd have some concerns on that. But again, the major concern would be wanting to keep the commercial up on 60th and not brand it down on L.A. where we already have enough regional commercial development going in that area. Now we're going to expose the middle school students to the same that we're going to be doing already with the high school. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. You know, I'll ask staff to respond. The applicant is within their rights as a property owner to subdivide their parcel in four lots under the MAP Act. In their particular case, they're actually dividing it along the zoning lines and in conformance to the general plan. So there are no development proposals with this parcel map, nor are they required to present any. At a future time, should they decide to develop their property, they would be required to come back with an application of a conditional use permit, which would require a public hearing, which this commission and possibly the city council would hear. So what's before us tonight is a simple land division under the MAP Act. It's not a plan for development. Anything else you want to add, Mr. Ludiki?
No, I think that pretty much summarizes it. The zoning pattern actually on this area south of what would be L4 didn't change in the general plan, and the subdivision lines or parcel lines do follow the existing general plan and zoning designations. In direct response, though, to one comment that the gentleman made, I know, of course, it depends ultimately on what the use of the property would be, but I do believe that the existing driveway that serves the A M P M was designed to also provide access to the parcels adjacent both to the east and to the north. So there was an intent at that time that there would be some shared access, and we do try to limit them even on secondary streets, which is what Avenue L8 is.
Right, as well as-- I know I raised a question of the street, the identification of the street improvement or setback, if you will, on the parcel map relative to L4, which does not match the parcel map to the parcel to the north that this commission heard and approved about a year, a little more, 14 months ago maybe. Might remember the day and the time. That was a long evening. However, I think you pointed out that depending on how the larger parcel, whatever it is, one, is the residential parcel is developed, we may in fact require access off of the residential street to the east as opposed to taking access off of L4.
Yes, there were some reasons to-- there were reasons that were good and valid to put L4 through and reasons that were good and valid not to. But you're correct, the ultimate development of parcel one would dictate a lot of that, and because we just are uncertain at this point what that ultimate development proposal will be, we wrote provisions into the previous project to allow us to have that street there if we determined we needed it. And actually, in looking at the existing easements that are granted, I believe L4 does have an easement on this property also. But I think the ultimate decision waits till a future day.
So it is a fair statement that any future development of these properties would come back, likely, well, all the commercials certainly would come back before the planning commission.
Yes, essentially so would anything on parcel one, even, I believe he raised the question of whether it would be some other kind of housing development other than single family. Well, that would obviously require an amendment to the general plan and a zone change, which also goes through the public hearing process.
Right, so it'd be properly noticed and posted and all the rest of it, right?
Correct.
As, you know, the way the zoning is configured in this particular area and the way the parcel sizes are defined here, it's not common that you would see parcels developed in total without further division and further adjustment. So it's very likely that whatever happens here, whenever it happens here, will come back. It has to come back.
I think that's a fair statement.
All right. Okay, any other questions or comments from anyone?
I was listening to the gentleman, and he had a concern about L8. I'm not 100% sure what he was, his concern was, is traffic or?
I think it was access of the commercial properties too.
Yes, my understanding is the concern is if you access the commercial property off of L8, does it lead to an increase in traffic along L8? And L8 is also a street that serves junior high school as well as apparently is a path of travel for high school students to Quartz Hill. So I think that was the basis of the concern.
Wouldn't future development include widening the street and giving the easements and stuff so that should avail the, alleviate the problem that he's concerned about?
Well, it may, yes. But once again, it's kind of speculative at this point because I think to some degree it depends on the type of commercial and what ultimately happens. It's, I wouldn't want to bind either the applicant or the city or anybody else to a particular approach at this point in time with a land division.
All right. Any other questions, comments from anyone? All right, it's appropriate then to close the public hearing without objection and consider a motion on tentative parcel map 71248.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 1039 approving tentative parcel map number 71248.
Thank you. Have a second?
I second.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. All right then. That concludes our action items this evening. The next would be the director's announcements. Mr. Ludiki?
No announcements, Mr. Chairman.
All right then. The commission agenda. Anyone have anything they'd like to bring up? I do just as a reminder that we've had at our last meeting, our last regular public meeting, we had a discussion regarding off-premise advertising tract map, or tract sale subdivision signs. I noticed this weekend that there's really been no change. If anything, there's been additional signs throughout the community added. Matter of fact, I observed the one individual putting them up Friday evening about 7:30 p.m., driving around and installing them in various locations. I thought it was interesting since a number of them had blown over last week and blown into the public right-of-way. Now they're strapping them with ties to speed limit signs and traffic signal poles and those sorts of things. So rather brazen, to say the least.
Sure. I can give you, late last week, I know that there was some discussion between the deputy city manager and the person who oversees code enforcement as to approaches on this issue. I'm also looking from a different angle, although unfortunately, the local BIA is kind of in between people right now. But we are going to also plan to approach them and try to enlist their assistance in terms of, number one, what we can do to restart their off-premise sign program or their directional sign program, and at the same time get some of their assistance in trying to tone down what's happening. And, you know, they were, when things were going very, very rapidly in the housing market, they were very helpful in that regard. But, you know, given the economic circumstances, they have not been as much of a presence, and, you know, hopefully we can get some assistance from them also from the other side.
Is it possible that the political signs that pop up during election season, there seems to be some kind of issue with those after the 10 days they have to be removed? Could it fall under something like that?
The minute you get into political speech, I always defer to the city attorney as to what the okays and not okays are.
Well, I know when trash is dumped in the desert, the city has a ten-wheeler out there with a, I think, 20-yard dumpster on the back that they, with a crane device where the city's staff person, at least one, I've seen him, drives up and down the desert roads picking up trash and on the sides of the roads where folks dump trash on city public right-of-way. Personally, I see no difference in putting up advertising signs in the public right-of-way, and I can see no reason why. If we're picking up trash out of the desert that people dump there, why we can't just pick those beauties up? And, you know, it'll put a stop to them about that quick. So I know it's not your decision, Mr. Ludiki. It's not our decision. It's not my decision. But I guess I'll make a call upstairs because I'm really tired of looking at this junk out there, and particularly when the wind blows and it blows it out into the public street. I mean, it's a hazard, besides being patently unfair to other folks who advertise appropriately in the community and follow the sign rules and regulations and play the game like they should. You know, why should three or four or five residential developers just take advantage of the system? I don't get it. You know, maybe it's kid glove time because, gee, we don't want to hurt anybody's feelings. But, you know, fair's fair and right's right for my chair. Others may have a different opinion. Apparently, somebody does.
Well, just a comment that I have. Exiting freeway off-ramps at nighttime, I ride a motorcycle, and the way they're building these signs, you're four by eight on a pedestal. Well, the wind blows these things over, and you can't see them until the last minute till you're right on top of them. You know, and this is in the evening when it's dark.
So have anybody asked you, Mr. Adams, to consider that, or is that not in your department?
My understanding is that code enforcement had had some discussions with the firm that handles code enforcement prosecutions, and that was not, that's not handled by my office. So my understanding is some discussions have occurred, and I'm not privy to that information. I'm not in that loop, unfortunately. I can be if you'd like me to be and report back to you, you know, next meeting. But as I sit here today, I'm not sure what's been discussed.
Is it worth our time to look at the existing ordinances? I mean, you know, I'm trying to, you know, I've read them, and I can see that clearly what is being put up temporarily, particularly on the public sidewalks and on the public right-of-way, is clearly in violation of the existing ordinances within the city. I've raised the issue verbally and in writing, and it still exists. So either, you know, code enforcement doesn't work on the weekends? Okay, fine, maybe they need to. But, I mean, do I call the sheriff and say, gee, Mr. Sheriff, there's stuff in the public right-of-way it shouldn't be? Or what?
I suspect they would probably refer you to code enforcement. I mean, to the extent that it wasn't actively creating a hazard. But in any event, I can certainly touch base with counsel that handles code enforcement prosecution and find out what discussions have been had and where that stands.
I mean, if our ordinances are, if my understanding is correct, the way the ordinances and regulations are written, maybe I'm not. I mean, nobody's told me I'm not, so that's why I keep raising the issue. You know, we have folks that are, you know, still putting up banners on commercial sites, which is, you know, that's gradually being dealt with Monday through Friday, apparently. But it's, you know, it's a blind eye on the weekend, and, you know, I cannot believe that at least one city employee with some authority hasn't seen it on Friday night, Saturday, Sunday, or Sunday night. I just, it would be, it'd be hard to convince that somebody hasn't actually observed that going on. I mean, maybe it's so prevalent that it's just kind of an expectation that that's what it is all over the town. But besides that, there are off-premise advertising signs on private property or adjacent to and partly in the public right-of-way that are clearly not permitted, four-by-eight signs that advertise various things, including residential subdivisions, both Pacific Communities, Kaufman and Broad, Rich and American, that are all over this town, that have, and not a week goes by that a new one doesn't go up. And the reason they're going up is because nobody's doing anything about it. And it's not just in this community, it's in the county as well as in the city to the south. But, you know, it's on Avenue N over the weekend, that segment between 40th and 45th, or 30th, excuse me, 30th and 45th West. It's on Avenue M. It's on Avenue L, on Avenue K, on Avenue J, 10th Street West, and 20th Street West, and 25th Street, and 30th, and on and on and on and on and on. You know. So, any suggestions from anyone? We're now three months into it, so, you know.
Yeah, on the issues with the right-of-way signs, you know, I don't know why those haven't been picked up because those, you know, once you put it in the city's right-of-way, that's not legal. I was of the understanding that at least as far as some of the off-premise ones that are within the city limits, I thought that code enforcement had catalogued some of those and may have in fact already notified some of those developers with a certain period of time that they need to correct it. But I'll have to check and see what the status is.
I think we've got leverage. I'd say that building-- Let's say they have building permits, right? They issue building permits to construction of new homes. They have subdivisions. In the code, isn't there a fine per inappropriate sign?
Well, actually, there's one if you pick signs up. We have a bail schedule that we used to use, I don't know if they're still using it, we used to use them for the little signs that got tacked to the power poles.
Is it still on the books?
I believe it is.
Sounds like a revenue source to me.
Ironically, it was even then. Unfortunately, what we found is that some people would just pay the fine.
It's okay.
And go out and pick them up again.
Well, a minimum of, what, twenty-five dollars per sign?
I forget the exact number.
I imagine it would pay somebody's salary and the cost of equipment on an overtime weekend pretty well. Because if you talk about the small signs on stakes that are in the public right of way, and the planters taped to power poles, taped to no parking signs, and on and on and on, you could pick up a couple of hundred in an afternoon. At twenty-five bucks a piece, that's a substantial sum. And I imagine we could collect, particularly if we're issuing building permits. We've got a, I think the policy is you have to pay all your bills before you get a building permit around here, isn't it? So, you know, fair is fair. You know, if I put up a legal sign for my real estate business, you can bet somebody would be on my back. So I just think it's, it should be dealt with. All right, thank you. All right, time for public business from the floor. There's no public here, but we will announce it anyway. Now's the time for anyone who wishes to address the commission on any subject regarding city business. Under state legislation, no action can be taken on non-agendized items. Members of the public should be aware of this when addressing the commission regarding items not specifically referenced on the agenda. Please complete a speaker's card for the recording secretary. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. We have no speakers? All right, great, thank you. And we stand adjourned then until Monday, September thirteenth, two thousand and ten, at five thirty P M in the planning conference room here at City Hall. Thank you all.